It's recording now.
This is the meeting for the Mobile City Planning Commission for Thursday, December 3rd, 2020. General procedures for this remote meeting are as follows. I will announce an application for items where no one from the public is attending via Zoom. Staff will give an overview, including any comments received from the public. If a member of the public will attend the meeting, staff will announce their attendance and admit them at this time. Once the parties have joined the meeting, if needed, I will state the commission's rules regarding the number of speakers as well as speaking time. Each application is limited to a maximum of four speakers in support and four people in opposition, limited to five minutes each. I will then announce the beginning of the public hearing. The applicant will present their case and up to three additional speakers if applicable. For each speaker, at the end of their presentation, I'll ask if there are any questions from any commission members. Once the commission concludes their questions of the speakers in support of an application, I will then call for interested parties to speak. At the end of each speaker's presentation, I will again ask if there are any questions from the commission. The applicant will be given an opportunity to rebut in accordance with commission rules, and they're given two minutes. After the rebuttal, I will declare the public hearing closed and the commission will go into deliberation session. After the commission has rendered a decision, the applicant and concerned parties will leave the meeting or will be sent back into the waiting room by the staff where they can disconnect. I will then call the next agenda item. Commission members and staff, please remember to keep your microphones on mute unless you're speaking to the meeting attendees. Let me call roll. I'm Libel Athan, Jennifer Denson, Kurt Blackwell, Shirley Sessions,
Here.
Alan Cameron.
Here.
Taylor Acheson, Matt Anderson, Nick Amberger. Yes, Rich.
Here.
Don Henry. Jay Stubs.
Here.
Is there anyone else here whose name I didn't call? We have a quorum. All right, would anyone like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
I'll second that. All in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. We'll move to... Yes, Ms. Pappas?
I just admitted Jennifer Denson.
Perfect, thank you. And we definitely have a quorum. Number one, 2614, 2616, and 2618 Dolphin Street and 608 Tacon Street, Williams Financial Subdivision. It has been recommended for tentative approval by the staff. Ms. Pappas, do we have anyone here to speak? Is the applicant present?
Yes, ma'am, we do. I'm admitting them now. We have Lance Kepner, Don Bowden, and Jerry Byrd. I believe they have concerns regarding a recommended condition.
Okay. Gentlemen, which one of y'all is going to speak first?
I assume I will, Don Bowden.
Mr. Bowden, would you give us your address, please, for the record?
1657 Spring Hill Avenue.
Thank you. Yes, sir, are you in agreement with... Have you read the staff report in agreement with their recommendations?
I have, and we're good with everything. We just have one clarification we'd like. Item number two discusses Boyle's Lane. And we will not have any parking or access from it. We're not requesting anything there. However, the Boyle's Lane is grown up completely, except that it has historically served as a driveway to a carport for the building on the corner. And while that building be torn down and we'll be building another building in its place, the owners wanted two private parking spaces not connected to their lot where they could go and come from their rear entrance to access Boyle's Lane. It wouldn't take away from our required number for our parking lot, nor would we have access from our parking lot. But we wanted to retain the ability for the two owners to be able to drive in and out of Boyle's Lane.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions, Mr. Bowden, about that?
I was reading through the email and was noticing there's some confusion as to... We know that Boyle's Lane is not a city road, it's a private lane, correct?
Well, actually, Mr. Byrd did some research on that. He could speak to that more than I, but he says that according to everything he can find, it is actually a city alleyway.
Mr. Byrd, is Mr. Byrd on the phone, Ms. Pappas?
Yes.
Has that alleyway been abandoned? Or...
No. The subdivision plat on the east side of Boyle's Lane just showed, and it was recorded, I'm going to say in the 80s. It just said Boyle's Lane. I thought, when I prepared that and put private roadway on there, I thought I had written a deed that it was private. Yesterday, this came up. I went back and reviewed four deeds. Didn't see anything about it saying private roadway. Didn't say anything about being an alley. Now, on the city website, it does in fact show like an alley all the way up to Cameron Street. Now, up Cameron Street, there's a subdivision up there that was done probably in the early 2000s. And it just had Boyle's Lane on it, no indication as to whether it was an alley, private road, or what. The center port, and actually up at Cameron Street, that area is being used by, I think, an adjacent owner on the east side for some kind of access. The center section of that alley is closed. I mean, it's grown up. But the portion on the south end, like Don was saying, the house at 2614 that shows on the screen that's up right now, 2614, excuse me, Dolphin Street, utilizes that alley for access into the carport in the rear of that. It's all paved. They back out and beyond that turnaround area going to the north, it's just grown up and wooded. But the not noting anything on the city website is the same as other alleys are shown in the city, wherever the alleys and the old subdivisions existed. So more than likely, it is just an alley, public alley, not maintained by the city of Mobile. And that's where we'd probably like to just leave that classification so that the owner of this could access that carport, private carport in the rear. And I could put on the plat, on the subdivision plat, Boyle's Lane, public alley, not maintained by the city of Mobile, so that there's no question about the ownership on it at this point in time.
Mr. Byrd, you... In the house directly behind the applicant's house, you're saying that one's using this alleyway currently?
No, sir.
The one below it.
Yeah, it's the one, it's the southeast corner, yeah, that one. And really, from, in the very north end of that is carport. And they back out of that carport with the rear end going up toward the north and then head south out Dolphin Street. I don't think Don's plan is going any further than that. But it probably need to be, have access to it for 120, 125 feet, according to his site plan.
Has this property been utilizing that alleyway in the past?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's all paved. Driveway in there, that's their access to their house there. There's a driveway on the west side that was access to the corner house that it used to be on that lot.
And, Mr. Byrd, is the current owner of that home maintaining that alley right now? Or is it just nobody?
You know, I don't know who paved it. It's asphalt pavement, it's in good shape. I would guess that they're the ones that did it because they're the ones that use it. And I think they're the only user of it. The apartment complex to the east in that subdivision I mentioned does not use it. They come in that driveway and sweep over S-curve and there's parking lot and drive as you go further north, but not in that alley.
Can I ask a question? It's okay?
Of course.
Would there be a consideration for a vacation of a portion of it so that you can incorporate it into the subdivision itself?
If you vacate it, we wouldn't get but half of it, and we need to use all of it.
But you said no one else is using it, and it seems, it's not a standard street. You said it's an alley. How wide is it?
15 feet. I think it's 15 or 16 feet wide.
Yeah, okay. And no one else uses it. I don't, I understand your need for it, and, you know, that's perfectly clear in every information that we got. It's just, it would probably be best, if you don't expect the city to maintain it, the city doesn't need it, to just incorporate it into the subdivision of the property.
Well, if we could have it all, that would be great. But when you vacate anything, when the city vacates anything, the property line is split down the middle of whatever you're vacating, and the owners on each side gets it.
Normally, yeah, but if they haven't been using it and you're the only historic use, and it's only 16 feet wide, it's not your average right-of-way. They probably can't object. They would probably have to sign off if they don't object.
Well, that's right. They would have to be a part of the vacation.
Right.
And if they decide, well, yeah, I'd like to have half of it, they're going to get it.
Not if it's incorporated into your site. They just have to agree that they're, if they don't use it, you said, or do they?
No, they do not use it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, most people, if you... I don't know. Because can we put this, this is a subdivision, so can we limit that it gets two cars a day? I mean, how do you patrol that? How do you get that into the equation?
Rich, I think what, if I'm looking at it correctly, I think what you're talking about would be is if you vacated it, then the apartment complex to the east possibly take half of it. But the concern is, I think, the property to the north that is currently using it.
I thought no one else uses it. I might have misunderstood then.
My understanding is the property to the north is currently using it.
But up at the far north of the alley, like up off of Cameron Street?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, and it may very well be if you vacated it, you would have to vacate, you have to get all the owners all the way up to Cameron, because technically, they have a right to drive down there, even though it's not open. But they're not using it. I can see where you could maybe limit to two-car, or access to two-car carport, something like that.
I don't know, that's why I asked.
Yeah. But actually, I guess, you know, if you leave it like it is, just a public alley, if anyone to the north of this asphalt that's in place out there today that the owner of 2614 been using, anyone going to the north to open that up and pave it, they would have to get city permission to do it. And at that point, the city gets involved, planning gets involved, and they probably get denied. I don't know, maybe they get denied or not, but at least you would know what was going on beyond that. But this owner only wants to go 120, 125 feet north.
I don't see any problem with just removing that item altogether. If that's, if historically, that's what the property, if that's how it's been being used, and if your applicant is wanting to use it, then that, it's been being used that way, and the one to the north is using it, then, I mean, just removing that item number two should suffice, I would, from my perspective, the way I'm looking at it.
Then it's just left the way it's been being used all the way?
Right.
If I may, and I don't know if city engineering or traffic engineering are going to have any additional input on this. I would like, if the commission's looking, well, regardless of how the commission's looking to go, I think this is worthy of some additional research and a holdover until the December 17th meeting. Staff reports were not posted until Monday due to the holidays, and then the applicant wasn't able to voice their concern and then find that this was not in fact a private road, as was shown on the plat. So I would like to do some additional research before the commission takes any action.
Margaret, I'm assuming all the neighbors around this area have been notified?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Margaret, are you talking about you doing the research?
I may come up with a homework list for you, Mr. Byrd.
I mean, no, I mean, you know, what other research would we do?
Well, we would like to research the history of Boyle's Alley or Road Lane, and we would also like to use whatever information that you have as well. However, you know, there are standards within the subdivision regulations for alleys which require 20 feet of right-of-way.
Well, I understand your thinking. But, you know, in today's world, if all they wanted to do was turn the power on in 2614, they would go out there and drive down that alley to access the carport in the back of it.
That's correct, but you now have a subdivision to consolidate all these lots into one and redevelop. And so this is the one opportunity to get this correct. Now, the waiver of dedication, you know, dedication could be what, the requirement could be waived. Like I said, we may also want to hear from traffic engineering as well. They had initially recommended denial of access to Boyle's. So I...
But don't you think, don't you think their denial of Boyle's Lane was just to make sure we didn't design our parking lot to enter and exit off Boyle's Lane?
What's... I'll let them speak to that.
Hey, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
This is Mary Beth Bergen, traffic engineering. The, I believe my initial comments were specifically about limiting the property to two curb cuts and not necessarily directly prohibiting access to Boyle's Lane. If it is in fact private, I don't have control over your access to that road. If it is public, that's where a different story would come in. So that's where the confusion needs to be cleared up, whether or not the public-private issue.
This is Doug. I looked at the city website aerial photo, what's shown on the screen now, just where Boyle's connects up to Cameron Street. And it's paved for about 580 some odd feet, and there are five different commercial properties using that to access their lot. I don't know if it's really kind of incorporated, it's incorporated into all their parking lots, it appears. It's not a separate paved road, but it is paved, and it's used by, by my count, five separate property owners.
But they come down, they come south off of Cameron Street to get there.
Yeah, I'm just saying that it is used by other property owners north of the site. And to vacate any part of it, you would have to get the consent of everyone that fronts on that right-of-way.
Right, so we're not asking for that. We're just asking if we can put two rear parking spaces for a private entrance for the owner that access from Boyle's. We don't need it to be part of our property.
I understand.
But the other point to make is, that's for your plan now, which is not site plan specific. So any future redevelopment that maintains this lot configuration, whatever curb cut control is placed on this subdivision approval is for any compliant development to be placed on the lot.
Even, even if it was limited to use of Boyle's Lane to access the rear of two-car carport, approximately 110 feet north of Dolphin Street, so it would define where that is. If that happened, the building gets blown away 20 years from now, that restriction would prohibit connecting, going on over into the other parking lot, any other redevelopment.
That's beyond any condition I can recall ever seeing placed on a subdivision plat.
It's groundbreaking.
I would...
I don't know how to look at it.
I would rather it held over for two weeks, just to get some clarification and try to get it better defined and correct, rather than shoot from the hip.
And the point of the holdover is to get clarification, whether it's a private road or a public road.
And get better input from city engineering and traffic engineering, because it's Mary, you know, Mary Beth was clear, but in clarifying, I believe, you know, her initial comments were a private road. But if it's a public alley, her comments, I believe, were different. Mary Beth, please speak up if I'm misstating you.
Yeah, I would get the impression that the access that is there now would be rebuilt, because the site plan that I saw at least, it looked like the road that is there may not stay just as it is. And so there would have to be some reconstruction of that alley, and to what standard would that be? Because it's in the city right-of-way perhaps, and not maintained by the city. I mean, there's some clarification on what expectations there are to build up the right-of-way in the alley for it to be within public right-of-way.
Mary Beth, this might be, I'm asking a question, you may have just answered my question, but assuming it's a private right-of-way, how is that going to impact what the requirements are going to be on that alleyway?
If it's a private alleyway, and it has existing access, I mean, I guess it would depend on who the ownership is and how they want to deal with how it's built up. But if it was, if it's public access, if it's a public alley, that's where I'm talking about the buildup needing to be clarified. Does that help, Don? Did I answer your question?
I guess what we're talking about is the curb cut coming on to Dolphin Street. If, right there at that curb cut, if it's going in off of Dolphin Street, if that property is private, then the city is not going to really have much say over what's done and what the requirements are.
Right. Unless it's part of the redevelopment of the site, then it would be part of the land disturbance permit. But if it can stay as it is, the actual curb cut on Dolphin Street, that would stay as it is and not be reconstructed.
And that's the intent. We don't plan to do anything to that curb cut or that road.
Right. I'm okay with holding it over and just trying to get some clarification, but I don't, I mean, we're not, they're not asking to change how the alleyway has been historically used. And the reality is, if, even if we were to deny it, more than likely, it's going to continue to be used that way anyways. So I'm more for just trying to find a way to give them the access that they need, so... But if we need to hold it over to get clarification, I'm all right with that, too.
Any further questions by any of the commissioners? Ms. Pappas, I do have one question. If we, if we just took number two out, then some future date down the line, that access to Boyle's Lane that they're using now to get into their garage, could it just start, could they extend their paving on something else and other people start using it from that property? I know that's not in the subdivision plan now. I'm thinking, if you just do nothing, and they develop their subdivision and leave the alley like it is, do the owners of that house just get to keep using it how they've been using it and hope that it stays the same?
Well, yeah, that's kind of what you're doing, because otherwise, it could very easily become a situation where, and I think it's what is occurring to the north of the site, where all of this just flows out into the alley, one continuous access point.
Well, in our case, there will be a building that goes from Dolphin up toward Cameron on the east side of the property. So unless we blow a hole in our building, there would never be access that could go through.
But this is not a site plan specific approval?
Right, I understand that.
Right. And any further questions or comments from commissioners? Any of the other presenters, Mr. Bowden, Mr. Byrd, or say anything? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak against this application?
No, ma'am.
Well, then we will move into the deliberation phase on this. Thank you, gentlemen.
Margaret, we said December 17th, we can get this done the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Margaret, can I ask you a question? Do you think it would be best to get a site specific plan so that this could be dealt with under one umbrella? Or is that asking the applicant to do too much at this time?
This is a subdivision, and so I, and it's the entire site, one zoning classification. I don't know the mechanism for which we could require that.
That they give the site plan with it, with the subdivision?
Correct.
Okay, because that would be a way to ensure that it doesn't become opened in the future, what traffic engineering is talking about. If no one's paid taxes on it, and, you know, technically, the city is supposed, you know, at some point, could be asked to maintain it if it's in the city's inventory. But you're saying that that's not really all established yet? Is that why you need more time, too?
I just kind of want to get it right, rather than, like I said...
Sure.
So, and like I said, we're not looking for a lot of information from the applicant other than him providing what he has already found and for us to do more research and try to come up with a clear condition that addresses the concern.
Right, no, I understand. No, definitely.
Mr. Henry has made a motion. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This will be held over until December the 17th? Mr. Byrd, I'm sure the city will get with you on what needs to happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to number two, which is 960 and 962 Dolphin Street. It has been recommended for tentative approval. Are the, is any of, is the applicant present?
Yes, ma'am, I've just admitted Daniel Clark. And at the very end of the discussion on application number one, I am admitted Mr. Amberger.
Oh, okay, good, thank you. Mr. Clark, would you state your name and address, please, for our record? Mr. Clark?
He's in the meeting, it says connecting audio. Mr. Clark, are you there?
I'm here.
Mr. Clark, would you give us your address, please? Mr. Clark, would you just give us your address please for our record?
Uh, my home address is nine Common Street, which is right across from the site. My office is in Spanish Fork, however, at 111 U.S. Highway 31.
Mr. Clark, are you there?
I am here.
Mr. Clark, if you would, please silence the live stream. It's giving feedback into the meeting.
Okay, give me a second, please. Is that better?
I would say yes. Thank you.
Sorry.
Mr. Clark, did you have any concerns regarding the staff's recommendation?
No, we are. We are fine with all the recommendations.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Pappas, is there is there are there any questions for many of the commissioners on this application? Okay. Is there anyone present to speak in opposition to this application?
No, ma'am, and nor did we receive any correspondence and opposition.
Thank you. Um, all right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. We're going to move into the deliberation phase on this right now.
Thank you.
Does the anybody from the city have anything they want to say or address on this one, Ms. Pappas? Any comments?
No, ma'am.
I am looking for a motion on number two.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations. We were all asleep.
That has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move to number three. Uh, I understand that the city, the staff has recommended that we hold that over until December 17th. Is Ms. Pappas, is the applicant joining us?
Yes, ma'am. I just admitted the agent for the applicant and it was requested by the applicant. Mr. Pipes, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Uh, we we filed the application, but we've not been able to schedule a neighborhood meeting we're trying to have. And so we'd be asked for a holdover.
And Mr. Pipes, do you think that between now and December 17th, you'll be up to have that meeting?
Honestly, I don't know. Uh, we're we're working with Councilman Manzi to set up that meeting and it's you know, we're we're hopeful because the seller, you know, I mean, I represent the buyer, the potential buyer of this property. And so the timing is not completely up to us. The seller is trying to move us forward. And so we're trying to move as fast as we can, but we don't want to go into this meeting without having that neighborhood meeting first.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that. Any questions for me, the commissioners? For Mr. Pipes?
My only concern is if he doesn't have, if that's not enough time to get it done, I guess we could grant another holdover at the next meeting on December 17th. Or would we be better off just go ahead and putting it for January 7th to give him more time?
Mr. Pipes, would y'all object to rolling over to the 7th since we've got the holidays coming up?
Uh, we we if that's y'all's direction, we can kind of make the sellers understand, I think, that that's the direction we got from from this planning commission. We only felt comfortable asking for a two week holdover just because of the purchase agreement terms. But they understand that this deal won't close without a successful rezoning either. And so, uh, you know, they're interested in this being successful. And to me, I think the meeting has to happen for it to be you know, productive.
I think we're all okay with the holdover. We just want to give you adequate time to to have your meeting and and come prepared for the with the application.
And and I appreciate that. I mean, we're we we were just kind of up on time limit, so we felt like we needed to file. We've we've spoken with Councilman Manzi on the phone, but we have not been able to get the neighborhood meeting together that we're looking for yet. And since it's somewhat out of my control, I don't really know when I'm going to be able to get it done, Mr. Henry.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners?
I I just have a, I'll be happy to let Mr. Manzi know. But you it might be wise since, you know, that is holiday timing to hold it over to the 7th. But I'll I'll make it a point to let his office know. You know, that it's important to conduct a neighborhood meeting. And you've already made him aware, correct? Did I understand that correctly? So he's aware.
Yes, uh, Mr. Rich, I mean, we spoke with him, we traded emails. He's
Right.
He's he's very familiar with the site and who we need to be meeting with. We just don't quite have our meeting set up yet.
Sure. Um.
But thank you.
But I I'll be happy to let him know and whatever date is selected, I'll make sure he knows when it's returning. And that's, sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Well, then I I'm going to Ms. Ms. Pappas, would you feel more comfortable with the city feel more comfortable if we held it over until the 7th instead of the 17th? Or is there a problem with holding it over to the 17th and then them having to ask for a holdover again?
I don't have the planning commission's bylaws handy. There's a limit to the number of holdovers that an applicant can request. You know, the applicant can request a holdover. Um, staff can recommend a holdover as well.
Okay. Well, I'm I'm going to move that we held it over to January the 7th.
Second.
We have them plenty of time to have their meeting and come loaded for bear when we have our next meeting with everything that they need. That has been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion on that? All in favor of holding it over to January 7th?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that passes to for a holdover to January the 7th. Thank you, Mr. Pipes.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move to number four. Which the staff has recommended to a holdover to January 7th as well. And all of the revisions will be due by December the 11th. Understand, Mr. Is Mr. Cummins in our meeting yet?
Yes, I've been meeting him and Mr. Bird.
Thank you.
Um, I think. Hold on, I did not admit. Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Cummins, Mr. Bird, which one of y'all would like to speak first?
Mr. Cummins coming on.
Okay.
I think.
He is. It's still connecting to audio.
Okay.
We have a little bit of a delay on this. Mr. Cummings?
It still says connecting to audio.
Mr. Bird, would you like to speak first while we're waiting?
Uh, yeah. I can go ahead. Um, I don't really know what Ben had planned to speak about, but pretty straightforward. St. Mary's has been there. St. Mary's Catholic School has been there a lot of years. And they have purchased uh, two parcels that have that's the reason for the subdivision to incorporate those into the overall campus site. The whole purpose of this is to construct a pavilion out in their playground area that they had grass at one time and it's all worn off. But this will be a covered pavilion. Ben has a very beautiful facade on it. It's not going to be just a a metal steel columns up and a metal roof stuck over. But that is the purpose. This would be used for the school activity and basketball practice in the afternoons after school. Taking care of of our inclement weather, hopefully. But that is the whole purpose of this to construct that. And then it you can see where it the pavilion comes in on the back of this property that faces on Lafayette Street. And that, um, that's the reason it had to come in to the subdivision and planning approval and the PUD and all. But I know the staff report has asked for rezoning because the property on Lafayette Street is zone B1. And it needs to be down zoned to R1 to match the rest of it. Um. It's it's been on.
Yeah, I'm here now. I was having some technical difficulties, but can y'all hear me?
We can. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, good.
Were you able to hear what Mr. Bird had to say?
I heard some of what he said. Uh, I I think he described the uh, the project and I I think the you know, it 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 just kind of it we failed to do the rezoning, you know, application. And I think Jerry Bird is working on that application now and will submit it as soon as he can. But with and we understand, you know, the holdover, but when will it be held over?
Uh, right now, we're recommending to hold it over to the 11th, assuming y'all can get all of your revisions ready.
Okay, that's December 11th?
January 7th.
I'm sorry. January 7th meeting, you have to have your information in by December 11th, all your revisions in by December.
Okay. Is there a sooner meeting? Can we, is there any way to to get it to the meeting sooner than that or or is that the the next meeting?
We don't have enough time to get the zoning notices out for the next meeting, uh, which is December 17th. The earliest it can be is the January 7th meeting.
Margaret, if if we get you the application in tomorrow. That would give you enough time to mail them out, wouldn't it?
No, not for everything else.
December 17th I'm talking about.
Pardon?
Uh, I'm I'm trying to come up at the December 17th meeting. We can we can submit that application to you tomorrow. And most of the report, all of your staff report from the PUD and the planning is going to flow right on over into the rezoning. It's not controversial because we're down zoning B1 down to R1. So the neighborhood should not mind that at all.
I agree, but it's a function of us not being able to get everything under dead.
That's a
We already have the agenda set for the 17th and those notices have already been prepared and sent. It's a rather heavy agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Any other questions or any questions or comments from the commissioners of Mr. Bird or Mr. Cummings?
Did Jerry Bird talk about the uh, the the radiuses at the intersections of Old Shell and Providence and Lafayette?
He did not.
Jerry, you you got anything to say about the the request for the dedication of those radiuses?
Well, I didn't because I knew they were going to hold it over and I just wasn't going to waste my breath.
We'll be happy to hear that. We'll be happy to hear that when the.
I would.
You can certainly address them now if you'd like to, or we can address them when it comes back up.
Well, maybe they can change their report if I address them now. The those two corners were included in a subdivision uh, prepared 12 years ago for McGill. And radiuses were not required at that point in time. And yeah, the the I understand the city probably won't ever do anything. Uh, the the existing ornamental fence and brick coping underneath it goes around those corners square. And to put the radius on there, if you ever did, it'd just all tear it up. I don't think if worst case, rather than say required. Let's leave it up to city engineering if they think it's necessary. I know we have done away with radiuses in entirety downtown in some of the areas because they know that they don't need it. And but and I don't think you need the radius at this corner. And like I say, it wasn't required before and would like to leave it off at this time also. Take that into consideration, Margaret.
Well, I was gonna say, Mr. Bird, when you submit your rezoning, go ahead and include that in the narrative.
Okay. I'm not going, yeah, the staff report said revise everything to show it. I will go back. I will include that on it. And then, of course, the other thing we can talk about, too, and Ben can can chime in on this, is the leaving the gates open on Old Shell and Providence during school hours. No. That's for security reasons. Those are closed and locked. When it comes time for carpool to pick them all up, the one on Old Shell Road gets picked up. I'm not sure if the the one on Providence gets opened except for the crawfish boil. But the the one on Old Shell Road for sure needs to not have that restriction.
Yeah, we've got, uh, we've got a like fenced and gated campus. The with the gates, the automobile gates are on Old Shell and on Providence. The the parking lot that's accessible to Lafayette Street is open. There is no gate there. So that parking lot, uh, you know, is, you know, open to the public, uh, you know, all day long. But, uh, yeah, you can see that where your cursor is now, there's a a gate there uh, which closes off, uh, you know, the 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 main parking lot and and campus. The gates on Old Shell and Providence, uh, you know, they they are they're closed and locked during school hours.
Any any questions or commissioners for either Mr. Cummings or Mr. Bird? All right. Thank you very much for joining us today. We're going to move to the deliberation phase on this. I'm going to make a motion that we hold over to January the 7th with all of the revisions due by December 11th.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of that holdover?
Uh, aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. We will hear this again on January 7th. Thank you, Mr. Cummings and Mr. Bird, if you're still here.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to call number five now, um, which is a subdivision and a PUD. It has been the recommended for initiative approval on both. Um, and staff has made recommended recommendations of findings of fact. Is the applicant present with us, Ms. Pappas?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I just admitted Chris Piper. Before he speaks, if I could, let me progress the slides. I did want to bring to the commission's attention comments entered into the web portal from Debbie Foster. I did want to bring to the commission's attention comments entered into the web portal from Debbie Foster.
Mr. Piper?
I'm here. How are y'all today?
Good, thank you. Could you state your address, please, for us?
My address?
Your name and address, yes, sir, for the record?
Yes, yes. Chris Piper, 1108 Dolphin Street, Mobile, Alabama 36604.
Much. Have you, have you had a chance to review the recommendations of the staff? And are you?
I have.
Do you have any comments? Are you in agreement with all of those?
I am.
Do you have anything else you'd like to, anything you'd like to address toward to the?
I do not.
Commissioners, are there any questions or, uh, comments by you for Mr. Piper? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? I know we had a comment in the web portal, but is there any, anyone here to address?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. We will move into the deliberation phase now then. Y'all wanted to take the subdivision first and then the PUD, or would you like to take, Ms. Papas, would you like for us to take them together, or does it not?
Let's do them separately so the findings of fact are clear for the PUD.
Let's take the subdivision first. The subdivision has been recommended for tentative approval.
Moved to approve based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, that has been properly moved and seconded, or there any comments, discussion by the commissioner? All in favor of?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Subdivision is approved. The PUD?
Moved to approve based on staff recommendations, findings of facts, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
That motion has been properly made and seconded. Is there any discussion from any of the commissioners or not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes as well. Thank you very much. As y'all know, at the bottom of our agenda is a call for a public hearing to take public comment on, um, whether the commission should recommend to the city council that the zoning ordinance, Chapter 64, be amended by deleting the tree protection requirements, and whether the commission should also recommend that the city council create a new city code chapter for tree protection and management. And that public hearing is scheduled for January 7th, 2021.
Uh, Ms. Latham, if I could just give a little bit of an overview?
Absolutely, please do.
Okay, thank you. Uh, again, this is simply to set the public hearing for January 7th. We do expect more than likely that that meeting will also be held via Zoom. We are including in the notice to please register with staff by noon on Monday, January 3rd, just so that we can get everyone organized and, you know, proper leads to attend the meeting. Uh, this, again, is to remove existing Section 644H from the zoning ordinance. 644H is strictly tree protection on private property. It does include language regarding the tree commission, which in its current form conflicts with state code. Uh, for clarification, 644H does not require tree plantings. That is part of the landscaping requirements, which will remain in the zoning ordinance. Uh, what has motivated this, comments received as part of the public outreach process of the UDC indicated that planning should not be making decisions for the urban forester nor service staff or the tree commission. And as, and we are in agreement. So, as tree protections are a section of the zoning ordinance, any amendment to the zoning ordinance, including a deletion, must initially be heard by the planning commission with a corresponding recommendation sent by the commission to the city council. Today, again, only sets the public hearing to discuss deleting this section from the zoning ordinance. Now, we have provided to the commission a draft of a new city code section for tree protection, so that there are no gaps in tree protection. Uh, it, chapter, the new city code chapter does not require any planning commission action because it is not part of the zoning ordinance. It is provided to the commission and will be posted on the city's website to document the intent. Tree protections will continue. They simply will not be part of the zoning ordinance.
Margaret, could you walk us through the process? I mean, we're, planning commission just makes recommendations and the city council makes, makes a decision. I mean, how, how does this work?
The planning commission will simply make a recommendation of whether to delete the section 6445 or not. That recommendation, along with the draft of Chapter 65, will then go to the city clerk's office for the city council to hear and decide. Uh, again, the planning commission can only make a recommendation on the zoning aspect. Uh, but we will forward the Chapter 65 draft with that recommendation, again, to make sure we do not have any gaps in tree protection.
And again, this is strictly for tree protection, heritage jokes. This does not have anything to do with us, with, with the planning commission no longer having responsibility for landscape.
That, that landscaping, tree planting, that will be in the zoning ordinance. It is not part of this proposed deletion.
And as I was reading through, it's, uh, it says the, the, if it's passed, then the, uh, urban forestry, they would have, they would have a panel of how many, how many members that would, and each of these members would be appointed by a city councilman?
That is the tree commission, and that, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Bert, that mirrors, I believe, state code. But the tree commission members are appointed by the city council.
So each, each city council person would appoint one person to the, the tree commission?
That is correct, and that is what we have right now, and like I said, I'm pretty sure that is set up by state code. But I can say definitively that is the current situation.
They wouldn't take me out. She got off and she didn't meet me, I guess.
I can.
Ms. Papas, somebody needs to.
I need to be muted.
I got him.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
And I noticed also that the, uh, there'd be a report to the planning commission before March the 1st of every year about the number of trees that were affected.
That is the tree commission, and that is in the current ordinance. That is simply part of that pulling up from the zoning ordinance and moving it over into the different chapter of the city code. That is currently in there.
All right. And then what is?
Margaret?
What is the notification process? What is the notification process for the public hearing?
We are following the notification process set forth in the state code, which is the legal ad is running twice on the 9th and the 16th and Lane Gap. And then once it's forwarded to the city clerk's office, it will then be advertised by the city clerk's office, again, in compliance with state code.
Okay.
I have a question, Margaret, if, if I may. Um, on the tree commission, they are, um, have oversight on public trees. Now, you, you, you said something about private, so I, 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 I just trying to follow hard, but could you explain what you meant that?
Okay, trees on private property. Trees on private property that's zoned commercially and undeveloped R1 and R2 are subject to permitting via the urban forester. If a tree is located on public property in a park, city right-of-way, et cetera, that is subject to the tree commission as established by state code. And the urban forester, Peter Tollers, I'm here, he needs to speak more to that.
If, if you could, in a nutshell, if it's possible, or maybe later in writing to the, uh, planning commission, how would you, how would you view this different than how things are going on today with, uh, tree preservation?
It will be no longer, planning staff will no longer serve as staff to the tree commission. That will be completely under the tree of the urban forester department.
For public trees.
Correct.
Yes.
Uh, applications for private property, tree removal permits will then be routed directly to urban forestry rather than having a stop measure coming through planning again. Uh, again, these are comments that were entered in the web portal for the UDC from the tree commission and from other concerned members of the community. And as moving it outside of the, this, outside of the zoning ordinance to its own city code, all it is, is a deletion. We decided to move forward with this.
Okay, that, that's very helpful. And, um, is there still communication and, um, I guess synergy when someone comes forward for, um, tree clearing, that if it involves a rezoning or development? I mean, how, how does that dovetail in together so the left's talking to the right?
Urban forestry is part of our permitting process while there is an initial review by planning. When it is a, um, a tree of significance or a tree that requires a permit for removal, all of those go through urban forestry and will still do so. We are working very hard with this proposal to make sure that everything moves forward together so that there is not a gap.
Right. I appreciate that. Okay. Uh, I, is, um, the urban forester with us to, if, if he has anything to highlight? I don't want to put him on the spot. It's not the public hearing, but just, um, so the commission knows where to look, so we're prepared when the public hearing comes?
Hey, I'm online.
Well, is there anything that you could add to wire up commissioners at this point, even though this is not the public hearing, just a, a snippet? I know a lot of work's obviously gone into this.
Uh, e- e- essentially, Councilman Rich, this, when this shifts over, this, this will give urban forestry greater insight on, uh, the trees for the city. Uh, and as far as tree protection, it, it will be enhanced. Uh, it'll, it'll, um, take care of our great asset of our urban canopy, and it'll give us a direct insight over it.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Anybody else have a question for Mr. Toller at all? Okay, uh, Ms. Papas, we don't have a, have to have a motion or anything on that, do we? We've just said it. We do.
Yes, ma'am. We need a motion in a second to set the public hearing for January 7th.
Margaret, before we do that, uh, if you would, please make sure that we're notified, uh, when, you know, exactly what time the public hearing is gonna be, so we can participate in that as well. Because this will be separate from our standard regular planning commission meeting, right?
No, sorry. It'll be at your regularly scheduled January 7th.
Sorry. I understand that. Okay.
Right. More than likely, we will take your regular agenda items first and then hold this at the end.
Okay.
Is there a way for the, um, someone in planning to create a flyer that directs people to the advertisement, or is the advertisement that we can get out in our newsletters and let, um, you know, the, the media know that we're going through this, because this is really gonna have a lot of community interest. The timing around the holidays a little bit might be lax, but the more people that know about it, that would, that'd be something that would help, I think, get the word out about the public hearing.
Mrs. Rich, we're working, um, with the communications team, the city's communications team, and in terms of, uh, um, adding the, uh, ordinance, draft ordinance to the website. And so we'll point you to that link, so you can.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you.
All right. I'm looking for a motion.
I know. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor of setting the public hearing for the, um, removal of that language from the zoning code? Say aye.
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 All opposed? That motion passes. We will have the public hearing on January 7th. Thank you, Ms. Papas. Do you have anything further for us?
No, ma'am, I do not.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank y'all.